Aloha. I'm Jason Schwartz, I'm not running for anything. This gentleman is our councilman, Don Couch.
Aloha.
Representative of...
South Maui.
South Maui District. But he represents all of you, everybody.
Everybody.
And you all vote. Remember that. So, South Maui doesn't mean you don't vote, it means you do vote.
Everybody from Maui County votes for all the council members.
And I only repeat it every time.
I know.
Because it's unbelievable how many blanks happen. Until we find another way, that's what we got. How are you? Welcome to the show.
Good, thank you. Thank you for having me.
You're welcome. You know, I'm an outside-the-box guy. You've known me.
Uh-huh, yes.
It's like you were my, uh, my teacher over at Akaku way back when.
And I didn't teach him how to do all this.
You know, technology, the smaller the camera gets...
I know.
People don't think you gotta have a big camera to get respect. But we can do higher quality.
This is amazing, what you could do, higher quality.
Lou was the one...
The sound is good.
I had a problem with the mechanism on the camera. He said, "Oh, why don't you just use your iPhone?" So, that's what we've been doing. We've been, you know, we still do the whatever editing, but we don't edit. Because, you know, we have people like Don. You know, we're not really mincing our words and being careful. Because you're a truthful guy. You've been in this thing for a long time. When did you first start in your political and...
Well, you know, I didn't start to be in political. I was doing Akaku stuff for a long time. And ended up, essentially, doing what you're doing, interviewing. We would do a live TV show. I think we worked on it a couple of times.
Yeah.
Called Opinions Maui. And we would interview people about issues happening around Maui. We did it for a number of years. And then we, um, the next set of elections came up in 1998. And we said, "Well, why don't we interview all the candidates? And sort of live, on live TV, and people can call in." So, we did that. And we did every race that was up in 1998. Except for the governor's race. I think, um, we had the Governor Kaitano on it. But we didn't get Governor Ling- or Mayor Lingal at the time. And, uh, we started doing interviews. And just got to know all the people and got to know the issues. And from that, I got involved in the Board of Ethics. Got to learn how to conduct meetings and about the Sunshine Law and about county rules and regulations and ethics. And I was the chair of the Board of Ethics for two years. And, um, we did some, uh, really interesting work. And that was my first even foray. Because somebody had known me from the Opinions Maui show. Somebody from the mayor's office. And I got appointed to the Board of Ethics for four years. And at the end of that time, somebody asked me to run for office, saying, "Would you be interested in this?" And I said, "Well, I'll try." So, I did. And got a good lesson on how to campaign and how not to campaign. And I, I lost. But at that same time, Alan Arakawa had won for mayor. And I'd met him through campaigning and whatnot.
Experience, yeah.
And so, he asked me to, to join his staff. And, you know, I'm an IT guy. I do IT and video...
IT, Internet technology.
No, information technology.
Oh, excuse me. See what I know?
Yeah, I was programming computers at the time. And then now networks. And it morphed into the Internet and whatnot. But that's what I've been doing forever and in video production. So, I said, "Well, okay." You know, I don't know anything about government other than what I knew from the Board of Ethics and kind of how things work in meetings and stuff. So, I, uh, I went and worked for the mayor, representing South and West Maui. You know, any, any issue that came up in South and West Maui, I would take the call for the mayor and then work with whatever department.
Sort of the liaison between the mayor and the department...
The mayor and the constituents.
To get something done.
Exactly. So, we would, I mean, everybody has issues. They're all over. So, I've learned about all the departments and what their functions were and how they worked. And, you know, how, how county government really worked from an administrative side. And so, um, at that time, we were trying to get the Keke High School here. We had a great plan. We started to work on the plan. And, um, it didn't, it fell through. Because the, at that time, the, uh, South Maui Councilwoman did not like the developer that we chose to, uh, to do this. And, uh, so that, that went away. And that kind of bothered me a little bit. Because it was one of those things where the guy did a Connolly school same way. We were gonna do the same thing. This council had to approve the land, the land deal.
Yeah.
And because, as now I'm on council, I realized that the other members don't know the area, the other areas as well as they would like to. So, they rely on the, uh, the area's rep. And when she said she didn't want that, they just said, "Okay, no, then nothing to do."
I see.
So, that, that was one tick. And then the other thing was the One Main Plaza purchase. While we were working, trying to, we were renting space at One Main Plaza. And we needed more space for the county. So, we said, "Well, why don't we..." We had an offer to buy it, but not the land underneath it. And there were some things that had to be done to fix it up. And it was all engineered, it was all done, ready to go. And there was a four-to-four situation. And the fifth person, again, was the same council member who didn't even talk to the mayor. So, um, after that went down in flames, I said, "You know, that's not right. That is just not right." So, I, this was in around 2006. I had run for the second time for State Senate and had lost again. So, you know, after the, uh, the mayor's race in 2006, decided I was gonna help Alan try and get re-elected. That didn't work. So, I went into the private sector again as an IT manager at a CPA firm. And, um, at the same time, it was just in the back of my head that, you know what, I should try for council. And because I don't like what happened, I thought, you know, I've seen, I've been in, as, sitting at the administration in council chambers, so I know kind of the process there as well. So, I thought I'd run for council. And my intent was to run against the incumbent at the time. Well, at the last minute, I mean, the last week before filing deadline, it turns out that the incumbent decided not to run. Wayne came in and tried to run. So, I ran against him and I lost. And I said, "Okay, well, that was enough, three times."
I did that too.
Yeah. Three times and, uh, you know, all right, I got the, I got the message. But then the whole issue, uh, you know, financial disclosure issue came up. And so, I said, "All right, I'll try one more time." And I ended up winning.
Revell.
So, you know, and you go in there and you, even from the experience that I had working at the administration and sitting in the chambers. And also, I, for Akaku, I videotaped a lot of the meetings.
Sure.
So, I was able to kind of get an idea of how the meetings flowed and everything and what they did and the work that was done at council. But the minute I sat down in that chair, it was, it hit me like, "Wow, this isn't, this is a really heavy burden. You gotta make sure you do the right decisions. You're not gonna please everybody. So, you have to think of what's best for the community." And it's not just sitting in these chairs. It's, it's a lot of work. And we had a, uh, within two meetings, we had a 201H, a Affordable Housing Fast Track project come up in Keke. And it was a situation where we were already short of affordable housing. It was in a not-so-well-accessible area. You know, it was up in Kaewahini. So, there was some issues as traffic. And so, we kind of tried to mitigate as much as possible. And it came down to a five-four vote. And, you know, when it, when, when we did the roll call, I'm still trying to think, "Which way do I wanna go?" And they finally said, "You know, we have a very big shortage of affordable housing. Yes, there's some traffic issues. And maybe, you know, some of the conditions we put on there would mitigate them." So, I ultimately voted for the project. Nothing's happened yet. And that, and one of the things that we were able to put on it is the condition of, "If you don't do anything within five years, we're gonna revisit this and we'll probably rescind your, your, um, your entitlements."
Right. You wanted a fast track.
So, yeah, we wanted to do it. And if you aren't gonna do it in five years, then you're not gonna sit there forever and hold up.
We need it now.
Yeah.
You wanna wait?
Sorry, not the same. So, that, that five years is coming up next year. Whoever is in the seat next, at the end of, halfway through the term, next term, uh, at the end of 2015, essentially, those five years are up. So, then we have to decide what to do with that.
You say affordable housing on...
That was within, yeah, well, that, that was within three day, you know, three weeks of being on council. It hit me, it's like boom. And yes, affordable housing, we worked on, uh, when I was working for the mayor. We, uh, worked on, uh, several projects to get affordable housing. We had Waikapu Gardens. We worked through the process, got that through the 201H process. So, we got 210 affordable houses and another 210, uh, below-market value houses because the developer put on...
What do you mean by affordable? I mean, that's always a kind of thing we'll talk about.
Yeah, there is a, there is a little question on what affordable is. The HUD, HUD, the Federal Housing and Urban Development Corporation, sets, uh, basically the, what is the average salary for an area. Okay, so, salary, uh, the median salary, sorry, not average, but...
Okay.
The median salary of an area. And they say, "If you're at 100% of the median salary, this is the price of a house you can afford." But they take into account interest rates and what you put down and what your, your family size is and what your bills are. So, they, they set the price. Unfortunately, it's fairly high here. Because the median, uh, wage is up fairly high for a family of four. And a lot of times, it's because people have multiple jobs.
I was just gonna say.
Yeah.
How off is that?
Well, and the median means that there's as many people above as there is below. Not average.
No, my only, I was just commenting about the obvious.
Right.
People are working two jobs like dogs.
Right.
And we use that against them by declaring that...
Because it's a federal, it's a federal requirement. That's how we get...
Needless to say, you gotta revisit that one.
So, you know, we, we, this project, we said, "You gotta start at 80% of the median." And work to, and then you sell enough houses at that. And then 100%, 120%, 140%. So, those are what were affordable houses, um, in that area. So, you could have gotten a, I think, three-bedroom, two-bath home, one-story, uh, 5,000-square-foot lot for about 100, that's 210, which is reasonable.
That's reasonable.
I mean, it's fairly reasonable now.
Why, this is why, Lou, behind the post office, that area?
No, this is, uh, Waikapu, Waikapu Gardens.
Oh, okay.
Okay? Off Waiko Road and Waiala. Okay? So, those sold just like that. I mean, people, there was a big, long list and they sold. So, all the affordables got sold. My, my current concern with affordable housing legislation is that, um, there's a workforce housing bill that says, "Look, Mr. Developer, if you're gonna build a, a, um, a project, 50% of the houses have to be affordable." That sounds good. The problem is, is that to make the dollar amounts for the houses pencil out so you could make a little bit of money anyway, you really have to sell at the market rate houses at a really high price. So, we're working with the workforce housing bill right now to say, parts of the bill that are really good is that if you're gonna build your affordable housing, you have to build it at the same time or prior to a market house. So, it's a, it's a one-for-one.
You get into real detail here, don't you?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We get into real detail and I'm sorry about that.
No, no, but I, I mean, this is a really good thing for the public to know.
Right.
You know, you started from scratch and you learned a lot. And you still, you still needed to learn a lot.
We're still learning.
You know, everyone, when someone runs for council, me included, you know, they all think, "Gonna jump in the seat."
Yeah.
And there you go, you're just gonna...
And usually, it's one or maybe two issues that, that you, uh, you're very passionate about.
Yeah. I used to say, it's...
Excuse me.
Sometimes you don't remember that your original intention was to drain the swamp when you're up to your ass in allequiesces. Because you get in there with great things and then there's this huge amount of what is going on.
Right.
You know, I don't even know what to say.
And you're expected to be an expert in every one of those things.
Just like that.
Right.
Alan Arakawa's eyes, I remember when he got bloodshot when he first moved on council. He said, "You know, I don't think he slept."
Exactly.
Yeah. You, you had that same experience? You seem very comfortable and confident. Issues that are coming up are getting more and more exciting. Like the, uh, I wanna say, the Untouchable. This GMO thing, I'm only guessing. And I'm gonna be part of it. Other council people have told me they really want the public to vote because it is such a hard issue. But it's setting up a condition here that is, um, I'm seeing people lining up with such, and I'm in a loss.
Yeah, it's, it's something new. And that's what I, um, you know, I talked about this on the floor. I said, "You know, it used to be that everybody sat down and talked and figured it out from, from here." That's what they would do. That's the island style. You sit down, pono, 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 and talk it out and figure it out and come up to a solution. Now, it's just like throwing nasty, I mean, if you look at Facebook, there's some nasty comments on, on both sides. It's not on, you know, on one side or the other. On both sides. And it's, it's just not the way it should be done.
I'm wondering...
And that's happening in the federal level. And it's happening in the federal level because it used to be that the congressman and the senators stayed in Washington DC until a recess period. Excuse me, my voice is going away. That's why I'm chewing the gum. So, maybe we should get some water.
All right, we'll take a break.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyway, I was talking about the federal government. I remembered where we left off. Even though it's been a little bit of time...
I'm gonna sit back there.
Good. The senators and the congressmen used to hang together through the whole session until recess. Then they would go to their districts. Now, with the airline travel being so cheap and whatnot relatively and frequent, they go, they leave Washington DC every Thursday night and go home. And then they come back Monday morning. So, now that they're not spending time getting to know people, I mean, they're, they're, they're just butt in heads because they don't know you from Adam other than, "This is my idea and this is the way I'm gonna be."
Right.
And, you know, some of the old timers, I spoke to Senator Noe just, you know, about eight months before he died. And he said, "It's just unreal how different it is now compared to the way it used to be." And it's just...
So, now it's ideological instead of getting around to work it out?
You know, your wife and my wife are, they, they go together. You know, they do, attend things together. The kids attend school together. So, we may have philosophical difference on the floor. I do with some of the members on the floor at the council. But when we're out to lunch or we're at a conference or something, we're able, you know, we get along very well.
That's good.
Yeah. So, it's different from when you're on the floor and you have to discuss something as opposed to, you know, just chatting amongst friends. So, bringing that down to this level, it's getting that way here on certain items, including this GMO thing. The GMO thing, um, we got the bill. And we got a situation where if we, as council members, were to introduce that bill, our corporation council says, "I couldn't, we couldn't do it because it's just not a valid legal bill." It goes against the charter. And there are a couple of things in there that, that just make it illegal. Something that they couldn't approve. So, we couldn't legally pass it out if we wanted to make it a law because it, it was flawed.
Is that explained? I'm curious, because I...
That was explained on the floor a little bit. Most of it was done in an executive session. But the fact that, you know, right at the end, Ricky said, "I can't ask you to vote on an illegal bill. So, we're gonna, I'm gonna defer this and let it go to the ballot." So, what, what would've been nice was to have people sit down with our lawyers, with their lawyers, sit down in a room and talk it out. Talk it out, you know, if it takes six or eight months, get something that both sides can agree on.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
I don't know if we wanna answer this or not. But the kind of personal statements that came from a couple of the council people about, uh, where this problem comes from has created, um...
Yeah, I saw that. And I, and I said, "Okay." Well, I was sitting there listening. Of course, when you're listening on the fly, you have to...
Yeah.
You have to make up your mind right there. But I, I recorded it. And I listened again. And it was, you know, um, Councilmember Cravelo said, "I'm from Molokai." You know, this, she, she had some concerns about the hate-filled comments and, and, uh, the, the way people were coming, again, coming here and telling people how to, how to live and how to work, how to do things. And Ricky Hokama was a little bit more aggressive on that. He actually said, "You know, in 1978, we had the Palaka Power thing, which was, they wanted to try, that was a constitutional convention year. And they wanted to try and put in the constitution to limit in-migration from the 48 states, from the mainland." And they found that they couldn't do it according to the US Constitution. They got, but it was apparently a very, very, very long discussion, dragged out and a very heated discussion. Because they were afraid of losing their culture. Now, when I say their culture, it's, it's not Hawaiian. It's not, you know, Caucasian, Chinese. It's the, the mentality of the people who are from the islands to say, "Look, we've, we've worked, we've lived together as a hodgepodge of people. If we have issues, we talk about them and we solve." Okay?
I hope that we can employ that now.
Yeah, yeah.
Even in this time.
That's what Ricky was talking about. He said, "Look, we're afraid of losing that kind of culture. Not the Hawaiian culture, not the Japanese culture, not the Filipino culture, but that culture of, of working together as best we can." Okay? Sure, people have arguments, but they, they usually are pretty good at settling things. So, you know, I heard those two comments and I said, "You know what? I gotta, I gotta speak up." I said, "I'm, I'm one of those guys that have come here. But I came here and I said, 'How do I fit in?'" You know, I learned how to paddle. I listened to what, how things are done here and tried to fit in. It's like me going to your house and, and saying, you know, "What are your customs?"
And wearing your army boots, where everyone takes their shoes off.
Yeah. As opposed to me going to your house and saying, "You know, Jason, that sofa should be over here and the TV should be over there." You don't do that. Just like people are, and it's happened every year I've been here. People come in and say, "You know, we should stop this, do that. You shouldn't do it this way. That's how we do it on the mainland." And it, I said, "You know, that's not what you do here. That's not the Maui way." I said, "And I'm embarrassed that, that we have some people that are doing that. Doesn't matter whether they're Hali, whether they're Filipino or anything. It's a, it's a group of people coming up here and just raising a sting without sitting down and talking." Okay? So, that, that's where those comments came from.
I see.
And that's where it came from here. I was just, it's one of those things. And then it got...
And I appreciate that you're open about it.
As racist. How is that racist?
I just know, every time I read the paper, I wonder. I really, I wonder about a lot of things that are being reported and choices of stories and angles and, I don't know. Maybe we'll have the publisher of Maui News on, we'll have a...
Yeah, give Joe a call.
Yeah. I would like to also, you may have things you wanna talk about with this.
Fire away.
There are so many issues. Circuit breaker, this and that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Pick your favorite issues that you wanna talk, that you think our audience may wanna hear from you about or you think is important that they see where you are somehow a positive or supportive of.
Yeah. Boy, I, you only have what, how much, how much space do you have on that phone? I was gonna say, "How much tape do you have?" But that doesn't work anymore.
You know, this can probably, I think we can do three out.
Oh, God.
Seriously. But, you know, issues. You know, I could just rattle all three.
You know, the, the administration does a survey every year. And they ask people, "What's the most important?" And the first two things that came up are education. Fortunately, those aren't county issues. But those are some things that we can talk about. We kinda help, are helping spur along the high school in Keke. I think, uh, I can't remember what the, the fourth one was. But it wasn't, it was more general economy jobs.
How about housing, homeless?
Now, see, that's, according to the survey, that next thing was roads. And then further down was affordable housing. And then further down was water. I mean, down at seven, eight or nine. Yeah, and to me, you know, you'd think it would be different. So, okay, roads. It costs, if you're just gonna resurface a two-way road like South Keke Road, uh, I think a mile, just to, just lay surface, not dig up the old...
I'm afraid to hear this number.
Yeah. Just to, I think a half a mile. It's close to $300,000, just to do a half a mile. And that's not digging up. Now, if you dig up, uh, you know, the base...
I've heard so many things about roads, about materials for roads, cheaper. In fact, I hope they introduce things. They seem to be, someone came to me with an extraordinary thing and they can't get anyone's attention.
Like what?
Uh, something to make roads cheaper, to bring the cost down dramatically.
Well, unfortunately, we have to, we have federal regulations. We have to do it. Because the federal government, a lot of our roads, the federal government will pay 80%. Again, if they get off their rear ends and start funding the, um, the transportation bill.
But your, your point was that costs are high.
Costs are high to do roads. And so, we have in the past, you know, three, four budgets that I've worked on so far, uh, we have bumped up doing the roads. Right when I first came into council, which is only three years ago. Everybody thinks, you know, "You're this good old boy. You've been in there forever." No, I haven't. I've been in there three and a half years. When I, you know, I've gotten four budgets under my belt.
Okay.
So, when, when we first got in, apparently, the roads were on about a 40 to 50-year maintenance plan. Every 40 to 50 years, they'd finally be able to pay because we've got so many roads here. Well, with, along with the administration and the council, we, we brought it down, we funded enough to do it every 25 years. Well, with, along with the administration and, and the council, we, we brought it down, we funded enough to do it every twenty-five years. So we brought it down, because that's usually the life of the road, is twenty-five years. And instead of patching it over and over again, we're, we're trying to do, get all the roads to a twenty-five year.
I understand.
Now, that doesn't mean every road on Maui County is gonna be done, because we have nine hundred lane miles a road. And so that's a lot of lane miles a road add, you know, to really completely replace a road, I believe it's a million dollars a lane mile. So we're talking a lot of money, a lot of taxpayers' money, some of it, uh, funded by the federal government, but, and that's from your gas taxes. But we have a situation where everybody's buying electric cars or high, high mileage vehicles, they're not buying as much gas now. And the electric cars, while they're good for the environment, they don't pay for the roads, but they use the roads and they put wear and tear on the roads. So that's what the federal government's having a hard time trying to figure out, okay, how are we gonna fund this now that the users of the roads aren't paying for the roads?
Yeah, that's an interesting, that's an interesting one.
Yeah.
Whatever thought of that?
And, and the thought was, well, we could just charge per mile, you know, which is fine, except for the fact, unless you wanna go every month and give your odometer reading to somebody and then pay, you're gonna have to pay once a year a big chunk of money instead of what you usually pay for, you know, for the county, it's, I think it's thirteen cents a gallon for gas, is those two county taxes. And federal taxes are around forty-something cents. So, but that's only if you buy gas, I mean, even, I, I have a hybrid, so I don't buy, I buy half as much gas as, as my car normally would. So, or if you drive one of these electric vehicles, you don't buy any gas.
So that's roads, let's work down all this.
So we go roads, yeah, I know, we could talk forever on roads. Uh, and, and, you know, did you know any of this stuff when you ran? I know you had your, you had your one idea or your two ideas and said, I wanna run.
I had a different broad brush, you know, and I would be more on a major economic and environmental place to create jobs.
Right.
But there's, and hopefully that would create revenue in different ways.
Right, right.
That would be my direction, it's, the type of jobs here, I've been looking for a real job, except real estate agent for a long time.
And that's, that's really, um, you know, you try to do as much as you can, that's kind of a, a market-driven value, um, situation as well as the government-driven. You know, we're trying, we're working at the R and T Park, we're here in Kihei, by the way, and the R and T Park is right up the road.
Do we get free coffee here for a long time? Jabba coming, just remember, tell Jabba.
Yeah, see, now that's, if you wanna talk about the economy, you buy this coffee store, which is Java Cafe, this one in Kihei, and you have a Starbucks there, two Starbucks up the road, they're packed with people. Yes, they deliver consistent product, uh, 'cause you can get it wherever in the country or in the world almost now. But it's not a local store, here, it's local, excuse me, they're selling Maui coffee, they're selling, excuse me.
That's right, that's a big point, Maui coffee.
They're selling Molokai coffee, they're selling Kona coffee as well, but they, that's what they specialize, their, their dark roast is cool organic. So that keeps the money here, so as part of the economy, we're, we're doing more agriculture, all kinds of agriculture, both organic and conventional, and there's a place for both of those, okay? So, you know, if, the more you buy local, the more the money stays in here and that helps bring the economy up a little bit. We're trying to diversify, we've been trying for years to get high-tech stuff, we've got a fairly decent high-tech park. They're coming in for more space to do more things, so that means to me that there's more demand to come in here and do more high-tech stuff, so that's, that's good, because those are high-paying jobs, but there's not a lot, there's about three or four hundred jobs up there. But that's still three or four hundred more different types of jobs than, than the service industry or.
I just know that we suffer here from many plantation mentality, only to employ lots of people at very low wages, that's why you got two jobs, everybody.
But here's the thing, a lot of, a lot of that isn't so much, I mean, yeah, of course it is the, the business order, but it's also the people, there are people that are willing to do that, because you get a lot of people moving in here that want, hey, I wanna live on Maui. You know, and not realizing how expensive it is, or they're fine, they've got savings, or they've got, they can live off of doing, because they just wanna surf, or they wanna, no offense to any surfers.
I'm sure you hear people that tell you all the time that kids are moving off island, they're.
But the people who are born and raised here are moving off island. I, I mean, I have an intern that's, that's working for me for the summer, he's, he was born and raised here. But I said, well, what do you, and he said, you know what, I don't think we should go Maui up anymore, and I said, then where are you gonna live? Oh, I'm gonna go to Oregon. Is that what you want your kids to do, is they get born and raised here and then go away? We wanna keep that, uh, that, that brain power here, if, but we have to have jobs for them. In all spectrums, we're trying to get away from just the tourism, tourism industry, but tourism industry right now is what's driving this island.
I understand, it has been for as long as we know.
It's, it's just the sixties, um, the, the funny thing is, you know, we, that, that, and that segues right into housing. You know, he was saying, hey, you know, we don't need to build any more houses, you know, I have a house. Great, if we don't build any more houses in, in five years, my house is gonna be worth two million dollars and, you know, of course, I'm gonna sell it and rent somewhere else and not got two million dollars in the bank, but I don't wanna have that happen, that's supply and demand. We did a, uh, the, the US Census did a survey every ten years, and so the, for, from the year two thousand to two thousand nine, the population of Maui grew fifteen hundred more people moved here than moved away to the mainland, from the mainland to the mainland, fif- plus fifteen hundred, not a lot. The next level up was forty-six hundred more people moved here from outside of the mainland, mainly Asia, that, than that moved away mainly to other countries. So between fifteen hundred and forty-six hundred, that's still only six thousand, sixty-one hundred people in ten years. Not a, a very rapid growth. You know how many people, the number of people who were born here versus the number of people who died here, what do you think that number was?
I'm almost afraid to hear.
Eight thousand nine hundred, hundred and fifty percent more than people moving here, so.
So what does that translate to?
That's ten thou- nine thousand people, and that in ten, fifteen years, you know, because that was up to two thousand nine, so, you know, they're gonna be about out of college here in another five or ten years, right?
But it also is this incredible demand, then others are coming and sweeping up the property.
Correct, there are people who are retiring on the mainland that have money.
Affordable housing, come here and eat up the affordable housing.
So that leads to, all right, if we're gonna build houses, we've gotta be able to build affordable houses.
And deliver them to the mainland.
But what is an affordable house?
Yeah, right.
So, all these affordable houses that were built on this, on the Waikitu Gardens project, two hundred and ten of them, now, their five or ten year, they're certainly their five-year, um, uh, restriction, deep restriction is up, which means they can now sell the house at a market price, or the ten-year is coming up, um, I think next year. So that means somebody who has that affordable home can sell it at a market price, at it, at almost double the amount they bought it for ten years ago.
And so.
And then it is no longer affordable.
Mainland buyer, less inventory.
A lot of people are still staying there, you know, so it's affordable to them until they move.
They can't afford to go anywhere.
They can if they can make three hundred thousand dollars if they sell their house.
Yeah, but it keeps pushing the numbers up and making it less affordable rental, everything.
When we're working on the workforce housing bill, what I wanna do is say, we'll give incentives to developers to, to make houses affordable in perpetuity, and the way to do that is we have a, um, what's called a community-based land trust. It's called Mahali O'Malley, and what they do is they buy, they would buy the house and then they would sell the house to somebody, but only the house, the land underneath would be Mahali O'Malley's, and they have a deal that says, you can live in this house and you can even sell it after so many years, um, depending on how many years. There's a formula that you get some of the equity and then Mahali O'Malley gets some of the equity, and Mahali O'Malley will buy it back, fix it up and sell it to somebody else, again, at a lower affordable price. So that keeps that house affordable in perpetuity, and once they get enough homes that they can do that, they're self-sustaining. Right now, the county is helping them out in this, helping subsidize that until they can get going to where they're, uh, self-sustaining. And then, then you've got affordable housing forever.
Well, it's a.
So that's one of the things, we're putting that incentive in the workforce housing plan so that if somebody does that, say, uh, you know, by the A six, seven days, required to do s- five hundred affordable homes there. If they can work with Mahali O'Malley and Mahali O'Malley essentially manages those five hundred homes, they sell them, they give the, you know, the, the, the sales price to the developer, and then it's their, it would be your home, it would be Mahali O'Malley's land, a forty dollar, fifty dollar a year, uh, fee on the land. And then when you sold it, Mahali O'Malley would buy it back at a certain rate and then, um, sell it to the next person for, at affordable, that fits the affordable criteria. So that would be five hundred homes, just like that, that the developer wouldn't have to deal with trying to sell and qualify people for the right thing, because Mahali O'Malley or some other entity like that, once they start getting.
My only concern, and again, I'm sure it's yours too, there's just not enough of it.
At this point, no, because.
We have so many people waiting for years for problems.
We have a lot of people waiting, but you also can't get loans now. It used to be you were able to get a loan.
Let me check with the cameraman here and see how we're doing, we've been talking a while. Is that right, that's all we've been talking, now you've said a lot in twenty-two minutes.
So, you know, that's the affordable housing part, and part of that, again, in the affordable housing bill is, look, you've gotta, you gotta build it at the same time or prior to your market-made home, so. Prior to this, the, the reason the affordable housing bill came along is there were people who would form a company and say, this devout, this subdivision we're gonna build, and at the end of that build-out, we're required to build twenty-five percent affordable homes, right? Well, they would never end, if you go to some of these subdivisions, you'll see three or four vacant lots. Oh, well, we didn't, you know, sell all the lots, we didn't, and now we're out of business because it's LLC, the big one, or whatever. So when, when we came into, when I started working for Allen Arakawa in two thousand and three, by two thousand and five, four or five, we came up, we did an inventory of how much affordable houses we were owed. Four thousand affordable homes we were owed, before that, you know, the folks that said, yeah, we'll do it after we build our own. So we said, no, this is not right, you've now gotta build them at the same time or before, and so, uh, that's what the workforce house, well, it's not working out right now because that, the, the economy hit the big slump, so you can't get loans. And also, the fifty percent affordable requirement, it's just too much, I mean, there's only been ten houses built with that, with workforce housing bill, and those were affordable for ninety days. And after ninety days, nobody bought, I think two people bought the ten, uh, two of the ten, the rest, then it went into, uh, regular market rate.
I see.
Because the houses were too tiny. So the, the fifty percent is just a little too high, um, we're looking at, you know, the current, um, bill I think is set to twenty-five percent, I'm gonna try and bump it to thirty percent. Maybe I'll get the support of my, uh, the members, uh, because of the way the math works out, it's better at thirty percent, I think it would work out, everything would work out fine, so.
I'm looking to deal with this in the meantime, and I, maybe you don't have an answer, maybe.
It's hard to say, because we also need affordable rentals.
We sure do, that is gigantic.
And to get that done is really hard to do because to have a, to build something, it's so expensive here. And then to charge an affordable rental rate, uh, you're not gonna, it's not, doesn't pencil out, why would you build, build something and lose money on it?
I can wonder if they can have a relaxed building code, basically set up a tent city or something.
Well, see, now.
I'm concerned about people that are homeless that aren't mental and drug problem.
Correct, we do have services for those folks.
They've been really not doing a job a lot.
But we have a new executive director now for Mahali, uh, not Mahali O'Malley, Kahaliakaola. It's gonna start, I think, next month. Hopefully, that'll turn that situation around where, I mean, for people who really need to, to need a hand up, will have the, the space. There's still the issue with the people who have a drug issue or a mental issue, and there's a, it's not just a Maui issue, it's a nationwide issue.
And, and that first group is also not being served, I mean, now it's not the forum, but you're not the guy, but I think it's.
They're not, not completely being served, but as many places as we have, they're being built.
Oh, I understand, I'm just talking about, there are people that fall through the cracks and we really don't have a.
We used to have a guy for, that worked at the county, uh, and I think he still does, he used to know every homeless person. But now there are so many, um, some being shipped here from Oahu or from the mainland.
Some have been created here.
Some are being created here, um, a lot of that has to do with the downturn in the economy.
Yeah.
And, you know, the, it used to be, when you went to Jack in the Box or McDonald's, the people working there.
What happened to me, I lost eleven houses, half a million dollars when the mortgage thing exploded.
Right, right.
How do you replace that here, the ten-dollar-an-hour jobs and not get?
But, but, at the same time, now you're, you know, in a spot where, you know, I gotta find a job, so I'm gonna work at Jack in the Box. You know what that does, that takes away from the twenty and the fifteen, the teenager.
So we're seeing.
The age of the homeless is coming down. Uh, some of them are just, but at the same time, we have homeless that have laptops and cell phones and. So we're, we're trying to figure out how.
And nowhere to plug in except Starbucks, which becomes homeless central and.
Right, so.
Crazy.
There is a homeless, uh, workforce, homeless alliance, uh, they're, they're, they've got a real go-getter now that's working.
Lisa?
Lisa, yeah, Lisa Darcy.
Uh, we need to help Lisa too, because she's also, I know, frustrated.
I know.
With lack of communication and organization and all, it's such an overwhelming issue.
She's hopefully getting that group together, before it was just a, they would meet and say, yeah, there's a homeless problem, we're gonna move out. Now, with Lisa in there.
I applaud her, and I know there's so much more to do, I'm hoping that, you know, our private sector will realize, we need you involved.
You know, you talked about a tent city, that's one of the things we wanted to do, um, in the Arakawa administration, is set up a tent city somewhere. First of all, where? Uh, second of all, getting the lawyers to buy into it was very difficult and we couldn't.
Lawyers don't buy in, that's their job.
But now, um, I, I was doing some research on those and I'm finding out that there are places on the mainland that are, um, have done that, and now they're closing them down because they just don't work. We, we sort of had one, um, a, a de facto one back, I remember with the Breakwater, when they were all moving to the Breakwater.
I remember that.
It was fine until it just got into, there was a lot of drugs going on, there, there was crimes going on, and then we had to just clear it out because you tried to let, yeah, it was overrun, you tried to let people do what they wanted to do and it just got crazy, so. And that's what they're finding out in these tent cities now in, on the mainland.
What about safe zones in parking lots, even for people to park? I mean, there are women that are homeless that have no place to take, they can't park on the street, it's crazy, I, I don't know what people do when they have nowhere to park.
If, I hope they are trying, they're reaching out to the county, um, Department of Housing and Human Concerns.
They have been.
They have.
That's why I say, there are people falling through the cracks, prison for our show, but safe zones, there's a lot of people that just can't be under the level of rules that get imposed from some of these, by nature of having so many people together.
Understood, understood.
And they, people can't be in a barracks kind of thing with kids screaming all night, fifty people in the room, you know, it gets to the. See, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, see, he's well-loved. I'm just bringing it up because.
Understood.
I know there's not easy answers, but you've made them all, affordable rentals, affordable housing.
Right. We gotta get affordable rentals.
We gotta try to do something.
And we're working on, you know, we can't, I mean, we, we've, uh, we've bought some land to build some, but we really can't build, we're not good. So we have to bring in nonprofits to build, so Habitat Humanity is working really hard in getting places, um, like I said, in Mahali O'Malley, and then there's a couple of, uh, people that specialize in affordable rentals that are coming to us now to say, okay, you know, we either wanna buy this complex or we wanna build something here. What do we need to do, so it, it's moving, it's moving at a glacial's pace, but it is moving. And, and like I said, it's a nationwide issue.
Do you love your job?
I love it.
You do?
You know, I had, I had, uh, black hair, I had to be, brown hair, before I started the job. You know, you, you get to the point where you're not gonna please everybody. I mean, it just, you have to sit there and say, what's best for Maui, you know, here's, here's where we're at, here's where we have to grow, I mean, we've set lines in the sand where we grow now, and so what is gonna be the best for Maui? And there's not, it's not usually this side or that side, there's gray areas in between, and a lot of times it comes down to, you know, as they're doing the road call, are you gonna make your decision? After you get all the, you know, I'm not an expert in everything, you're not an expert in anything, so what you have to do is you have to sit down and listen to everybody. You listen to testifiers, people say, oh, they don't listen to testifiers, yes, we do. It may not, you know, we got criticized for not asking questions, well, a lot of times you hear the testimony.
You are a very open sitting council person.
Right.
You know, for years, the ones that were sitting in the seats didn't, they didn't open up like we're doing here, and I don't know how many of the present people really do.
But I just know that. I just know that-
I see that you are, I hope that our public knows that.
Yeah, I, I always say, anybody can come, you know, you give us a call, we'll fit you in the schedule, but we will talk to you.
So, you love it, you have any plans to go further, or you're just-
Uh, you know, I just gotta get through this election. I know, and it, it, it kind of amuses me, um, I know when I ran, I, they had specific reasons why I didn't like what the incumbents was doing, and I named them. This one, it, it surprised me, nobody said, they, you know, nobody's ever talked to me beforehand and said, hey, why are you doing this? They just said, well-
Running against you. Well, when you live in a district and you feel you want, you know, you stand, I know.
You know, it used to be, you used to talk to them, and if you didn't like what they said, then yeah, go ahead and run against them. Now, it's just like, okay, which is fine, I understand that.
Which is more like, again, we're talking about what happens in Washington, it's happening here, you know, we-
Well, we're, we're still, we're still, we still talk amongst, you know, if we go out to a conference or whatever, to an event, we chat. We don't, obviously, because, you know, we're the only ones at the county and municipal level, is the only place that has sunshine law, state and federal, so they can talk. We have sunshine law, so if we get together more than three, we're all very cognizant of what we talk about. We talk about, hey, how's your kids, or whatever, or whatever, what event we're going to.
But you're not talking business.
We can't talk business, and, you know, everybody says, well, you know, you're gonna get five of you guys together, you're gonna be in the back room and talk about something. I said, well, no, because if you get a certain five people, or three or two, three or four, or five, or even all of us, you're not always gonna agree. So, if you agree on one thing in the back room, but then one of the five gets pissed off at you for not voting your way, or, or not seeing your way, or whatever, gets pissed off, he's like, you know what, those guys, they broke the sunshine law, so it's self-policing. We're very careful. If we get three, okay, there's three of us, if the two we're talking about some, because, you know, you and I, we're councilmen, we can talk about an issue, but as soon as a third person comes in, we have to stop, and we do. Say, oh, sunshine law, or if somebody approaches, they see that you're talking about an issue, they just turn around and walk away. But, you know, behind the chambers, there's a lunchroom, and usually, there's five or six of us eating lunch, and staff. So, there's, there's either always staff there, or there's enough of us to say, you know, we don't talk about that.
Have you had any issues with security up there? You know, I mean, they have new walls, new stuff, it used to be very accessible.
Used to be very accessible.
Changed a lot.
Yeah, it turns out that staff requested that, uh, prior to us being on there. There were people that would come in and bang on the walls and say, hey, I know you're in there, I wanna talk to you, you can't hide from me, and that was, yeah, the staff. So, they decided to put the security on there. It's unfortunate.
Yeah.
I remember when videotaping in the chambers-
We hope that by the time people come here, they've been screened three, four times.
Oh, no.
We're gonna load it down, huh? We get them, huh?
Yeah, uh, unfortunately, it just, that's the nature of the beast. We are, you know, hoping we don't have to hire security of any kind.
Any major issues, you know, that people would like to hear your take on? I mean, I, like I said, you as a sitting council person, different than someone I'm trying to give them, get an idea of whether-
Well, you heard the, the housing situation, it's, it's, it's tough. We're coming out of the re- the, the great recession right now, so hopefully, that'll pick up. The one good thing is, is we drew a line in the sand and said, you can, two, uh, two years ago, in the Maui Island plan, we said, okay, here's our urban growth boundaries. So, we'll let you develop inside the-
That's the big question.
Yes, uh, we made it very, very difficult to change that line. So, we've got the line in the sand, now we're going through the community plan process, rather slowly, to my take. You know, we did have a setback in Lanai with the unfortunate plane crash, that, that set back the process quite a bit, because those were a couple of the, the planners that were dealing with that, so. We are moving forward with the Lanai community plan, it's, I think it's about ready to come to council, that's a good thing. Then there, there, we've just named the Molokai Community Plan Advisory Committee, and hopefully, once we finish the Lanai at council, then we can start, we can name the West Maui, uh, Community Plan Advisory Committee. So, we're starting with the community plan, so that's where the community gets together, thirteen people from that community, the West Maui community's gonna get together and say, this is how we want to see it built out, here's the urban growth boundaries. They can, they could probably ask to have those urban growth boundaries changed a little bit, um, but they have to have a really good reason. You know, shrinking, I don't think would be a problem, expanding would be a problem.
Well, it's nice to hear that someone drew a line in the sand.
We have drawn a line in the sand, and that sand, that line in the sand is there until twenty thirty, and I, I'm guessing longer because of the way the recession has, has taken hold, and so nothing's really built. You know, that's what the developers have always wanted, they said, where can we build so we can build, and we don't have to deal with all the, you know, saying, yes, you can build here, no, you can't build here, or maybe this week you can, next week you can't. We put that line in the sand and said, here you go, you can build inside of here, you still have to go through some of the processes, but this is, and if it fits with the community plan, it should be fairly smooth sailing as opposed to, uh, having to do all kinds of, uh, difficulties. Because all that stuff adds to the price of the house. The longer it takes to get through that process, it adds to the price of the house. So, therefore, only the people who are retiring from the mainland on big, huge salaries, and there's a lot of them, can come here. And we don't want to have that as our soul in migration. We want people who are living here, or who have moved away, you know, born and raised here, moved away because they can't come back. We wanna bring some of those back as much as possible. So, we're, we're working on that, and it's not a, I can switch it on overnight. Now, I know, um, one of those lines in the sand we drew was around Olawatu. And that was a, a situation where, since two thousand and five, the developer said, okay, we have this chunk of land. First of all, they went to the community, prior to this, developers would just say, this is where we're building. And the community would say, like that. This time, the developers went to the community and said, can we build here? Do you think it's a good idea to build here? They went for years and had talk stories, they had meetings with the community, they had a lot of, they got a lot of input beforehand, and they finally came up with a product that if they do it right, it should work. But they have to do it right. Now, what, all we did is say, okay, we'll put that line in the sand around Olawatu, but you still gotta pass the community plan process. We did not, contrary to what some people are saying, we did not change any zoning in Olawatu. We did not do anything other than draw a line in the sand saying, okay, this is where you can do something if the community plan allows for it. So, there's another whole set of thirteen people plus planning commission plus council that that has to go through before any kind of okay is done. And that's five years from now, six years from now, maybe, at the mu- at the earliest, I would say.
I see.
It would start probably three years from now, and by the time it gets through all the processes, it's gonna be three to five years from now. If, if it all gets done, now, you're gonna hear people say, wow, you know, they're allowing building in Olawatu. The concern, and it's my concern as well, is the reef. It's a beautiful reef, the problem is, is if, yeah, nothing is done with Olawatu, several hundred houses can be built there, I mean, ag lots. These two acre, plus ag lot, with no real controls on runoff. So, all that stuff, either foul mud, or if they put two or three hundred homes in there, uncontrolled drainage will all go into the reef and kill that reef. Whereas if something's done, uh, called low-impact design, where they have rain gardens, they have man-made wetlands down before it gets into the reef, the stuff that goes into the reef, into the ocean, is going to be much cleaner and, uh, much more controlled than what is existing now.
That you got now, all happened through being there on the council.
Sitting in those meetings, listening, uh, listening to testifiers, reading written testimony, um, it's a lot of work. It's a part-time job, too.
How is that?
Yeah.
It's called part-time still?
Yeah, we don't get, we don't get paid vacation or, uh, sick leave like a regular employee does. Which is no big deal, because since we're part-time, we set our own hours.
You know, I'm thinking we should give Don Couch's voice a break.
Oh.
Because, uh, he's been talking a lot, he had a busy day.
Yep.
Your days are long days.
Yes, they are, yeah. We were in, uh, committee today, what do we, oh, Budget and Finance Committee, we recessed till Friday. Budget and Finance Committee, we're talking about three different options of, of, uh, buying some land to put our new, the DMV. The DMV is leaving, that we, being kicked out of Maui Mall by the owners. Again, we're renting that space, why not buy some land, put a building up, and at the end of twenty years, hey, we're, we're living there rent-free.
Are the owners by chance A and B?
One of the spots is A and B, and for their four acre lot, um, for us to buy that four acre lot for six million or something like that, uh, in a, it, all the work is done, except for building the building, all the site prep work and everything is done. We get, if we buy there, we also get thirty acres of land from Baldwin Beach Park to Bayou U.S. All that will be county land, never built on, you know, and eventually becoming an, uh, I would say a passive park. You know, Baldwin Beach Park has a soccer field, I, I wouldn't see any other, um, fields there, maybe grassy areas and, and tree areas, maybe where you can camp or something like that.
Hopefully safe.
So, yeah.
That's a real rough stretch.
So, that's, that's one of our options. Another option is to buy five acres in Kehalani and get a fifteen acre parcel for affordable housing, which is closer to the county building. So, that's the, our, the debate we're having, we had this morning, and then we're gonna carry on to, um, Friday. There are some people that don't wanna do either, some of the members don't wanna do either, because they want everything concentrated in, in Waialuku to save Waialuku, which I understand. But the service center, the DMV is already outside of Waialuku, so instead of bringing all that traffic into Waialuku, let's keep it outside. My, if I could only, I would like to get both pieces of land for eventually using stuff for the, for the county. You know, land is cheap right now, um, interest rates are cheap, you know, bond rates are cheap, so money is cheap, land is cheap, get it now, or we'll have something like what happened with Palauia Beach. Palauia Beach, at one time, they could have bought it for six million dollars. I'm sorry, six and a half million dollars and had the whole beach. They bought it five years later, two lots for five million dollars. So, for, for want of a million dollars in five years, which I understand, we were in difficult times at the time, but gotta think ahead.
Sure do.
You know, for want of a million dollars in nineteen ninety-six or something like that, or two thousand, I can't remember exactly. We now have multi-million, multi-million dollar homes and two lots for a park.
Let me ask you, because I've seen, and I don't know how this even, it used to be parties are a big deal, then we all went nonpartisan. Over time in government, have you changed your opinions about some of the people that you're working with?
Oh, yeah, yeah. We're, we are nonpartisan.
No, but I'm, for example, I, you know, and Linda Lingle may still be a friend, but a lot of decisions that were made.
You know, when you get into the office, you don't know. Some of her decisions were interesting, um, and so, you know, but you don't know unless you're in there, sitting in the office. Some of them are questionable, uh, and-
And I don't wanna pick on her, I'm just thinking, over time, you know, when you watch politicians, you hear them grow, and, um, I'm just wondering if-
Some go different ways, you know, I, prior to being on the council, you had different opinions on some, some of-
You know that thing around here, some people say, Republican is this, Democrat is this.
Well, that's why I like it, we're nonpartisan.
Yeah.
County offices are all nonpartisan, I think it's a great thing, because we're our people. You know, we talk to each other, we know where, I know where Ricky stands, I know where Ellie stands, I know where Mike White stands on certain issues. And you just have to argue your case on the floor eloquently, and if they just don't agree with you, then, then the vote goes as it does. I've been on votes where, you know, I don't even get a second to my motion. Well, so is Ellie, and so is Mike Victorino, I think. You know, several people have not gotten seconds to their motion. And, okay, I guess this was not a good motion. And then we've been, a lot of nine-zero votes, a lot of five-four votes, and the thing with the five-four votes, even this term, not the same five people or the same four people, it's different depending on the subject, so.
What do you think of the term limit stuff, and the people back and forth and-
Term limits are good.
Again, running after jumping away and coming back, Bob Carroll, five terms to-
No, Bob was only in there for three, and he came out for health, and now he's, he's back in for two.
I'm just wondering about all this term thing.
I think are good, um, it would be better, because you have to run every two years. You know, and you have to kind of think of that when you're, when you're taking some of your part-time work away from the building. Some of your attention gets taken to having to run for election, doing these interviews and whatnot, so.
Although, these guys are always available, but just know that, I think that people really appreciate these.
Yeah.
This meet the candidates stuff, three-minute, oh, Charlie, I'm sorry.
This, this helps quite a bit, and, and you know, I've done it, I think, every, every election, I'm not sure.
You know, but you know from your experience running, people crave this, and they wanna see where you are.
Right, yeah, and so, you know, term limits are good, I, I'm fine, fine with the term limits. Maybe you have to sit out two terms before you come back, uh, just to give the, the other guy a chance, maybe that would be the way, or just-
Maybe someone else would run, I'm really, it's sad to see how few candidates, and I just myself, I'm underwhelmed by people.
But, but it's, you know, it, it is a difficult, it's getting more and more and more difficult. It used to be a really, really a part-time job, where you just come in and do your, uh, committee work and go. But now, there's more and more complex things going on, just, you know, from, from eighty thousand people to a hundred and fifty thousand people in twenty years. You just, there are more things you gotta do, and you gotta be more specific now. Before, when it was forty thousand, fifty thousand people, when the law said this, you got the intent of law, so everybody was kind of cool. And if not, somebody would say, look, you can't do that. Now, you've got somebody saying, no, you can't do that, and the lawyer say, well, it doesn't quite say that. So, we, now we have to make more ironclad laws as opposed to the intent, there's the spirit of the law. So, it, it's getting to where you've gotta be as, as accurate as you possibly can be, and you still can't, um, foresee every situation. Who knew that we needed to have a, a law ten years ago, or even fifteen years ago, about driving while texting, texting while driving, texting while talking on the phone, but people would say, what the heck is that? Well, now, you have to have that law, and it's a very good common sense law.
Speaking of that, I'm sure you realize this Bo Hawks thing, which is happening. I had an interview with him just yesterday, and I must say, he is incredibly compassionate.
Oh, sure.
And, um, really holds no ill will against the Maui police for the incident.
He did take a swing at the cop and ran.
Well, I don't think that's what I heard.
Well, you look at the video, he takes a zig. Yeah, he took a swing at the cop and then took off. At least that's what it shows on the video.
I'd like to look closer down. Guy didn't feel a swing in this guy.
Well, take a look at it. And then, I didn't think so either, then I looked at it again, I said, oh, no wonder.
That's an interesting perspective.
And then, uh, somebody was saying, well, you know, only if, if he was in danger, should, you know, he was a threat.
Taser, no.
Do you taser him? Well, he was running on a public street, what if a car was coming and swerved to avoid him and hit somebody else?
I don't know, just maybe tasers are fairly significant actions.
It's probably less damaging than tackling the guy and then having to subdue him.
Well, the thing about the swing part is new to me.
Yeah, yeah, take a look at the video again, from the beginning, when he, just before he takes off, his big swing and then goes. this big swing and then goes. I mean, big roundhouse.
Anyway, see, it's, this is a good thing we're not in a court of law. A roundhouse, you sure it was...
It was just supposed to boom like that? No.
Anyway, I, I said, I, I met him and I, you know, violence.
Yeah.
And I'm glad, I hope this all can work out and we don't have issues.
Right.
Believe me.
Right.
That isn't why I brought it up. I was just gonna say, you know, we're out there, people have come forward and whether they're unknown or known and all that's happening. I'm hoping through this election season, we all remember, we all love each other and brothers and sisters. And when all this benchmark called an election is done, we all live here together.
Yes.
And I hope that we get that.
No ho'opono'ono'ono is a good thing.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a great idea.
Very important. I, I hope that we all honor that because that's the biggest thing that I see now. There's so much tension in the air for these big issues.
I know. And the, the tension is new. It's new tension. Hopefully, everybody takes a breath, let's see what happens and move forward in a, in a more calm, sensible way.
Move forward together and whatever will be happening, we gotta remember, we wanna do this. You know, that word 'pono' is such a Hawaiian word, but real important. Stand in balance and gentle and talk things out and make it all work without this viciousness coming out.
Right.
Things that are, I don't know where they're coming from, but they sure are an island style.
Right. And that was my, the gist of my comment. Let's make it island style. Thank you very much.
Thank you for taking the time for this.
Sorry we ran over, oh, almost an hour.
That's good. Well, you know, that's one thing, uh, it's nice that you know, you know what you're doing and you feel like you're confident in what you're doing.
And I'm just getting my legs. This is my second term. So I'm getting my legs, getting ready to, to become a veteran. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys for watching. Thank you.
Aloha.
Aloha.